So, let's say a word of prayer. And for our prayer today, I'm going to read a text about the resurrection, since we are still in the period where we have been reading different stories that relate to Jesus' resurrection, and for that matter, our own resurrection and our understanding of the resurrection. So I'll read from John, chapter... John, chapter 20, verse 11 through 18. John, chapter 20, verses 11 through 18. "In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit; amen." "Mary stayed outside the tomb weeping; and as she wept, she bent over into the tomb and saw two angels in white sitting there, one at the head and one at the feet, where the body of Jesus had been. And they said to her, 'Woman, why are you weeping?'" She said to them, "'They have taken my Lord, and I don't know where they laid him.'" "When she had said this, she turned around and saw Jesus there, but did not know it was Jesus. Jesus said to her, 'Woman, why are you weeping? Whom are you looking for?' She thought it was the gardener, and said to him, 'Sir, if you carried him away, tell me where you laid him, and I will take him.' Jesus said to her, 'Mary.' She turned and said to him in Hebrew, 'Rabbi,'" which means "teacher." "Jesus said to her, 'Stop holding on to me, for I have not yet ascended to the Father; but go to my brothers and tell them, I am going to my Father and your Father, to my God and your God.'" "Mary of Magdala went and announced to the disciples, 'I have seen the Lord and what he told her.'" Dear Lord, we thank you for the gift of your Paschal mystery, your coming into our world, your suffering, your death, and your resurrection. We thank you for leaving us an example of how we are to be your representatives in this world, enlighten our minds and our hearts to understand exactly how we should live this Paschal mystery, and give us the courage to always live it, even when it has to cost us so much. As we gather at this time to continue to reflect on your Word, may your Holy Spirit unlock the secrets of the Word to us. May our hearts be receptive of what you give us, and strengthen us to put it into practice as we wanted to and as we have committed our lives to. We ask this blessing through you, our Lord Jesus Christ, who lives and reigns forever and ever; amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit; amen. So, today I want to focus on a principle of interpretation. I want to talk about how you... When you read the Bible, what to do to study the Bible on your own. And I will not finish this now, but I'm going to mention a few things I will be available in the subsequent classes that we will have. If you have any questions, let me know. Come back later with the questions or send it to me by writing to explain more what interpretation... What we mean by interpretation or Bible interpretation when you want to study the Bible on your own, the perspectives that you need, that are available. And I want to... Today, I want to just talk about interpretation as we have it in the Catholic Church, the Catholic Church's way of interpreting or approach of interpretation of the Bible. That's what I wanted to mention. I have said something about this some time ago, but I wanted to repeat this because it doesn't come easily to all of us. And so I sent you a handout, and I'm just going to follow the handout and explain some of the things that are on the handout to us. First of all, and to continue, I want you to know that when you read the Bible and you find... You're looking for an understanding or trying to study what you have read, you are always looking at where to practice what you get. Where to practice what you get is in the relationship between you and your fellow human beings. The whole thing about Christianity is about humanity, actually. So it's a God-human relationship and our role in that relationship. Okay? So we relate with our fellow human beings, and we enable our fellow human beings to also relate with God. So we can become people who help other human beings to realize their God-giving rights, their God-giving humanity, that they can feel that in themselves. Because we believe that humanity fell, or the original humanity, the good humanity that God created, actually fell below the expectations of God. And that is why Jesus came to the world. That is why God became human in Jesus Christ. So that is to restore, to bring back humanity, the fallen humanity, back to God. So every Christian becomes somebody who is trying to promote that reconciliation between humanity and God. And so the way you relate with another human being will facilitate that person's experience of God. We become sacramental in that aspect. That is why we became Christians. That is why Christianity is in the world. The purpose of Christianity becomes the purpose of why you and I are Christians, because we want to help humanity to reconcile back to God. So when you read the scriptures, there's no text in the Bible that doesn't have that function. Every text in the Bible finally will lead you, will lead you and I to our relationship with our fellow human beings in a way that will make them experience God. So humanity is a very, very important... Human beings are the... Human beings brought about religion. Human beings brought about interpretation. Human beings brought about... Human beings brought about all these things because God was... God actually gave humanity the power to recreate, to develop, to increase and multiply. So human being is the target for why Jesus died. Human being is the target. And if human beings become good, the world will become good again. Human beings' activities are the ones that are going to usher in heaven. Human beings have been given that to cooperate with God's Spirit, to bring about heaven. Okay? So humanity is the key. They are made for... And for God to become human, that is the message right there. God became human. God didn't become an animal, another animal. God became a human being, so that the human being will be... Will go on to facilitate the final goal of bringing heaven to the world. So we have to take care to help human beings, humanity, our own humanity and the humanity of others. So the Bible is about that. If I read the Bible, any time I read the Bible, I pick up the Bible to read, I'm looking for how I am going to live, how I'm going to practice this with my fellow human beings. It has to always be that. And so these are the perspectives. I'm just going to go through it. The first thing is the principle, this principle of interpretation that says that God requires from us what God has already given grace for. Okay? So God will require from you. This thing is something that should be in the back of our minds. God will not ask you to do something for which He has not given or She has not given the grace to do it. God does not just give you a job without giving you the capacity to do it. So you cannot say, "I can't do it," or you cannot... We should not reject, but we can. God gives us again the faculty, the ability to reject God or to choose for God. Okay? So that we are part of it. But we should always have in the back of our minds, if you read the Bible and you begin to feel a pull to do something about some situation, don't say that this is beyond my ability or capacity. Look, rather, ask yourself, "What is the ability that God has given to me? Where is the resource? Where are the resources?" Because it's there. God will not ask you to do something. God has not already prepared the tools in you or in the world or somewhere for you to be able to do it. Okay? So that's a principle of finding out what God wants me to do. Okay? So I have this always in the back of my mind. God requires from us what God has already given grace for. Already God has worked for. And the purpose of the law... So when you are reading the law, the law in the Old Testament, the laws, we are studying the laws of Jesus Christ in the Sermon on the Mount. But we have already said that in the Old Testament, they are in the Ten Commandments and all the courts. The law is that "humankind's conduct towards God and neighbor be in conformity with God's conduct towards humankind." Okay? So if God calls you to do something with your fellow human beings in the same measure or in the measure of which God has already... God already relates with you. Okay? So there's that... If God asks you to do something or if you read in the Bible, if you say, "Oh yeah, I love God, and me and God, we are in this kind of relationship," that's not just in a vacuum, that's not a separate thing. If you find your relationship with God, you choose... We would know also right away, right there, there is the other component. You cannot love God... You cannot be in relationship with God separately from your relationship with your fellow human beings. It doesn't exist. We might be deceiving ourselves. If we think that we can relate with God separately, and then our relationship with our fellow human beings is separate. No, when you find one, you will find the other attached to it. They are like two sides of a coin. You can't have only one side of a coin. You have two sides. So that conformity should always be in the back of our minds, that our relationship with our fellow human beings conforms to God, our relationship with God. And therefore, the measure by which God loves us has to be the goal, has to be the yardstick, the standard by which we measure whether we are in a good relationship with our fellow human beings. Okay? And then the next one says, "God initiates the covenant bond of love and demands a covenant conduct from humankind towards God and neighbor." So God is the one who initiates. God is... We are not the ones who initiates a love for God or for our fellow human beings. It is God who starts it, who starts the process. That's why we are saying that if you feel that you are being drawn, you are being called to do something for your fellow human beings, know that God has already done it to you. Know that it is right there. God has already given you that and provided you that. For instance, if you feel... If you feel like there's somebody you have to forgive in your life, somebody you have never thought about to forgive. In fact, you have locked that person up and you have thrown away the key. And then at a particular time, you begin to feel that something is pulling you. You just don't... Can't have peace of mind because you are thinking about forgiving this person. Then I... Scripture study, scripture interpretation says... The principle says that if you are feeling like that, we should know that it is because God has forgiven you. God has given you that forgiveness so you can do it. So once God... You come to know that God has done something for you, you automatically feel pulled to do it to other people because it becomes what we call it... We say, "You can't give what you don't have. You give what you have." And when it comes to this, it's so true. This is how we are able to explain the sacrament of reconciliation. At the point when somebody asks me, "At what point does God really forgive us?" I say, "God's forgiveness is already in you, it's already on you." But when you begin to experience it... So the forgiveness can be there, available, hovering around you or even in you, but you are not feeling it. But the moment when you begin to feel it is the moment when you also exercise, the time that you exercise patience with somebody's flaws, somebody else's mistake, somebody else's inability, somebody else's imperfection. The moment you begin to cool down a little bit about other people's wrongs, you begin to feel in yourself how... The power that is in you, the forgiveness that you have already received. Okay? So that goes to say this, that God initiates the covenant bond, the relationship bond of love. God initiates that love and demands that same relationship conduct from human beings towards God and neighbor. So this is the first principle. This is the first principle that we have to keep in mind, begins to exercise or try to identify that in your own personal life. And when you read the Bible, the things that come to you, the feeling that comes to you, the pull and the calling, because that's what happens. Whenever you read the Bible, at the end, you read a story and you give it a thought, you will begin to hear things. You begin to come to certain messages. And some of them are like demanding something from you or calling you to go into action, do something. When that happens, we should remember some of these things, and then we will understand just what we are called to do. The second principle has to do with the way we understand the whole of how we were saved, salvation. What salvation history is. Salvation history is not static, okay? It is dynamic. It is ongoing. Salvation history did not come to an end. It's still going on. It's still going on in our world. So therefore, interpretation also goes on because, you know, when God created the world... I'm not talking about Adam and Eve only, but whenever that God created the world, it wasn't like this that we have it. It wasn't like what we have right now. There were no computers at the beginning. And because we know history, we know history. We can go... We don't have to go far, and we know when computers came to be. There was those times when my father goes to work and... All today, I mean, people go to work and they call their spouses at home about five times throughout the time that they are at work. You know, five times, some of them, they see each other. "Yeah, how you doing? Where are you?" "Well, okay, all right." But in the past, there was nothing like even telephone for the ordinary human being, ordinary citizen, there's no telephone. So people go to work and they don't see each other until evening. Okay? That's a totally different arrangement, a totally different relationship culture. Okay? So even culture is not the same from the past to now. Okay? So there are different things that are going on. So salvation history also has not become static. My friends, I want us... A reason why this Bible study is based on a dynamic understanding of salvation, not a static one. And I want Catholic Bible studies folks to always look at even teachings like that, our teachings. The teachings are not static. Our teachings have evolved with time. And the way we practice, the way we practice liturgy especially, celebrations of the liturgy, they are rituals. They are the way we use our hands, the way we use our knees, the way we use all these things. They are evolving, they are not static. In the Middle Ages, there were certain things that meant something. Today, there are certain gestures that mean differently. I have told people before, and then in space, right? Space. When you are in the United States, the way you use your hands are not the same as the way, if you go to Africa, the way you should use your hands. Okay? And I've warned a lot of my students who are going to study in... Who are going to... Who got... My students from Stanford, who got the grant to go to Ghana to do study abroad, I always warn them, "Be careful the way you use your hands." Okay? Because certain ways of using their hands... I mean, in Ghana, on the United States, the middle finger might mean something, but in Ghana, it means nothing. Instead, the thumb. Be careful the way you use your thumb. Okay? So it's different from... Even today, from place to place, one place to the other, gestures are different. So it's very, very important that we know that this history is dynamic in time and in space. And as God's action or history moves on, so also human response moves on to perfection. We still have to continue to understand who the human being is. Some people think that we have finished knowing what a human being is. We don't know everything about humanity yet. There's still more to know. I... I'm just praying, praying for this helicopter that is on Mars right now. Okay? We now have a helicopter in Mars. Oh, just wait, wait and see, there are many things that are coming, that we are going to witness. I believe that. And I believe that a time is coming that we might just have to take a taxi and go to Mars. Maybe I will not be alive, but that doesn't mean that the history will continue and salvation history will continue also to evolve. Okay? So God's action for us Christians achieves its climax in Jesus Christ. So we say, "Jesus Christ is the one who gives us what the climax will be." Because our climax, salvation history climax is in Jesus Christ. So Jesus becomes the one who tells us how we are to consider the understanding of law. And so also, the law moves from the Torah, the Ten Commandments, to its climax in Jesus Christ. And that is why, that is why I have told us several times, when you read the Ten Commandments, don't stop there. You can't stop there. The Ten Commandments are the beginning of the revelation of God's law. And the fuller understanding for us Christians is in the life of Jesus. Jesus is the one who put... Who explained the Ten Commandment in a way that makes us realize the fullness of what the Ten Commandments seeks to do. So for instance, but if you want to stop with the Ten Commandments, I know, I've said this before, if you just stop with the Ten Commandments, you can sin. If it's only the Ten Commandments you want to keep, if you want to just look at them, "Okay, I check all the boxes of the Ten Commandments." The Ten Commandments don't answer certain questions that has come up in our day because it wasn't a problem at that time. Okay? The Ten Commandments don't cover everything. So you can keep all the Ten Commandments and you will still sin. There are certain things that are wrong today because we know better what humanity is and what human rights are, which are not human rights, many, many, many... Like women, women's participation, for instance. You know, the Ten Commandments talk about, "That shall not covert your neighbor's wife." That shall not covert your neighbor. But can you do the other way around? If you want to say, "Oh, I want to see the Ten Commandments before I do it," well, we have a problem there. Today, we have seen a better understanding of gender, of sexuality, of all these things. We have better understanding than in those days. And perhaps somebody might come and say, "Oh yeah, but God gave it." But let me... Let's understand this right now, that... So human beings say that God gave it. Okay? So nobody... It didn't drop from the sky. It's human beings with their experience in their day felt that God was telling them something, and they put it to writing. They felt that God... Mohammed did the same thing. Mohammed said God was speaking to him, and then, because he has not been to school, his friend Ali was the one who wrote it down. But he recited it. He was reciting what God was telling him, and his friend Ali wrote them down. That is why the Quran, the name Quran means recitation, recite. And so throughout religion, throughout history, there have been people who have come up and said, "God told me this." How do we verify that? There's no way to verify that. But whatever the message is, it will prove itself important. But whatever the message is, it will prove itself important through history by practice. When people are living it to see whether it actually gives life or it gives death. That's when you begin to, to test it, you test it by, by practicing it. You see if it will give the life, if it will achieve the purpose for which God has given it. So, so we should, uh, keep these, these, uh, two principles i- in mind. Now, how these principles came about, why I'm talking about these principles, uh, uh, that we need to know how, how we began to think about biblical interpretation, okay? For a long time, biblical interpretation was not, I mean, people could, could, people could not even own the Bible. In the, in the Catholic Church, you could not have a Bible of your own. And therefore, you cannot, there's not nothing like Bible study. There was no Bible study, there was no, uh, uh, biblical research until sixteen seventy-eight. And the Catholics were the ones who began the, the scholarship, biblical scholarship, began to study the Bible. Catholics began, it started with this priest called Father Richard Simon, okay? Father Richard Simon began and he was the first to publish a critical work, to study the Bible critically. See, the Bible is like any classic. For those of you who, who, who have a background in literature, the classics are particular, uh, uh, kind of writing that come from the past, uh, that are, that need to be treated with, 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 uh, with some kind of, uh, critical, uh, approach. You cannot just take a, a, when you read a classic, the meaning does not jump at you. Classics are written in such a way that they are written with setting literary, literary, uh, device. Like it could be poetic, it's a poem, has a particular way of writing. And certain things could not be written as songs, so they are written as history. Other things cannot be written as history, so they are written as songs. Other things are, uh, fables or myth or legends and stuff like that. So the Bible is such a, 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 a kind of writing, it's, it's a cla, it's a classic. And so it cannot be read, uh, uh, just, uh, just be read to people and then, and then what we read is what we are going to practice. That's not, uh, is not ready yet to be consumed. So, uh, Father Richard Simon began and published, did a critical study, explanation of the, of the Old Testament. And when he did that, he was criticized by, by the church. He was beaten, he was, they're like, this is demonic and you cannot do that, you cannot question the Bible. You cannot do anything about that, you just have to leave the Bible alone like that. So, so, uh, Father Richard Simon, uh, began and then, um, about seventy years after, uh, uh, another, uh, this time is not a priest, but, uh, this man called Jean Astruc, I think in Austria, uh, he came out, he followed, he's also a Catholic, but followed Father Simon and also came to study the Bible and identified two sources from which the Old Testament came, two sources. Was, uh, he was trying to find out where, where did these stories come from? How, how were they written, from where were they written? So then he came out with two sources. He identified two strands of writing, because when you're studying the literature, the way of writing, he identified two, two hands writing the Old Testament. And those two hands, he called them, there's one hand that, that used the word of, the word Yahweh for God. That used the word Yahweh for God and then the other one that used the word Elohim for God. So he named those two sources, a J source and an E source. Now, let me say something more about Yahweh. Yahweh, the name Yahweh, Yahweh is the name of God. But that was the name of God that, that in Exodus, God told Moses. God revealed that name to Moses. And that name simply is a Hebrew word, uh, that means I am. Yahweh means I am, okay? So, so when Moses asked God, when I go to the people, you are sending me to the people, when I go to them and they ask me, who sent you? Who, what would I say? And Moses, uh, God said, tell them, I am has sent you, I am sent me. And God is, that's, that's just what it is. The Hebrews believe that God exists, God is. So I am is the name of God. So that word Yahweh, Yahweh that we call Yahweh means I am. And the name of Jesus Christ, Yeshua means, uh, Yahweh, I am saves. So that's Yeshua, Joshua. Joshua comes from that word. Joshua means Yahweh saves or I am saves. So that's what he identify, he was able to identify that, that, that there's one, one writing that uses the word I am for God and the another writing that uses the word Elohim. Eli, or Eli, uh, 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 when you pass it in with a sentence, it might shorten to Eli. Remember, Jesus used that word for God when he was on the cross. Eli, Eli, lema sabatani. My God, my God, why have you forsaken me? Jesus used that word too. So, so those two are the two main sources or two main writers, uh, uh, a group of writers or whoever they are, but he just identified these two sources for the writing of, of the Bible. And so then, uh, he too was, the, the church will not have it because they are ahead of their, their time. You know, they are ahead of, uh, they are ahead of, uh, uh, the spiritual development, so, so they were also chastised, he was also condemned, the church told him a packet. They actually put his writing on the index. The index is a, 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 a kind of part in which the church will put any writing that they think is dangerous, uh, they will put it in the index. And they will ban any Catholic to read that text. So that was the end of the Catholic, the Catholics started the, 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 this, uh, this exercise of trying to understand the Bible fully, interpretation. And, but the church did not accept it, so it was, it came to an end and the Protestants took it over, okay? So the Protestants in seventeen eighty through eighteen fifty-three, the Protestants continued. They took what the Catholics has thrown away, they took it and developed it and went on and added two more sources. They found two more sources and added it to the J, uh, the Yahwehs and the Elohim, Elohim people. The two other sources were the, the, uh, third one is a deuteronomy, uh, deuteronomy's history, a second law. They saw that somebody was trying to, to rewrite the laws. Some parts of the, uh, 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 some part of the scriptures are a repetition of the law. So, so, so they, they, they use that as another source, that is the D, uh, the, the deuteronomy's. Detro, uh, is second, uh, normos is law, so second law. So there were particular writings that were looking like a repetition of the, the, the old law. And then they saw another writing that they call priestly, which is the P. So another source that is like, that is more about priestly stuff like holiness and all this, uh, dirt and purity and making distinction, God is holy or don't touch this or don't do this. Or what is, what is, what is, uh, what is pure, what is holy? Some kind of writings were, were, were like that, they were about the issues of holiness. So they called it priestly writing, they called it priestly writing. So they had these four, okay, they started, the Protestants developed these four. But the one who popularized it, they didn't take it far, the one who actually popularized it was Julius Welhausen, uh, a German Julius Welhausen, in eighteen seventy-six, he popularized this idea. He made sure, he helped us to be able to put a date on these writings. That made us to find out finally when a particular text in the Bible was written. When they were able to date them, we were able to find when certain writings were dated. That is when we came to find that Genesis was not the first to be written. We came to find that Exodus was the first to be written. And then, because Exodus was talking about the people who wrote Genesis. Exodus in Genesis, the stories in Genesis, uh, tell about the people when they didn't even have writers, they didn't have journalists. So the stories in the, in the, the stories in the, in Genesis were talking about, there were no Israel. There was just splited, uh, families of the Hebrew people. It was in Exodus that we find Israel as a nation that has a constitution, that has laws, that has priests, that has writers, scribes, and who began to write their story. It's like me, I cannot write the story of my life when I was, uh, a child, okay? So now if I write my history, I'm writing it from the perspective of my grown, I'm grown, I'm already existing. So I write from now, the things that I'm experiencing right now, help me to capture some of the things that came before. The things that went on, went in, on in my life right now in St. Charles are more vivid than the things that I experienced in New Orleans. So this is the way that we got, we got to know. So he, he began, he, he dated, uh, he give, he gave the dates and I think the dates were, uh, J, he dated J up to, uh, eight hundred, I believe, eight hundred, uh, uh, B.C. And E, uh, was dated seven hundred B.C. And D was, uh, six hundred B.C. And, uh, P was, uh, 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 five hundred B.C. We will, I will bring you the, the complete, uh, dates later. Then in the nineteen forties, the Catholics came along. There was a revelation that Pope Pius the Twelve published this encyclical called Divino Atlantis Spiritus. Uh, Divino Atlantis Spiritus was where the Pope told the Catholics to explore, to jump into the, 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 uh, to jump into publishing, uh, uh, into studying the scriptures. In, in, to pick it up from Father Simon and Astruc's time and begin to develop, uh, because at this point, the Protestants have, have, have gone very far. So the Catholics had to, had to come back and, and do something with biblical interpretation because people were just, just taking everything literally. People were interpreting the Bible literally for a long time. And so the Catholics came back to take what belongs to them. So in Divino Atlantis Spiritus, they were asked to begin to, 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 to study the Bible. Catholics were then allowed to have a Bible of your own. But even, even that time, there was still, Latin was still, uh, the overall language anyway. So then, uh, in nineteen ninety-three, uh, the biblical, the, the, the Vatican, uh, put together this, uh, uh, Pontifical Biblical Commission that published the interpretation of the Bible in the Catholic Church, okay? So this became the document by which, by which Catholics interpret the Bible, okay? That was published in April fifteenth, uh, in nineteen ninety-three. And this document approves what we call the Critical Study of the Bible. The Catholics do not read the Bible and just run with whatever, whatever jumps out or exactly what is written there. Uh, we, we were asked not to interpret the Bible literally. Catholics don't take the Bible literally. So, and so the, the, the church blessed the historical critical method as opposed to the fundamentalism that was there before. Now, so here are some of the methods that came out of the biblical, Pontifical Biblical Commission, which, which Catholics, uh, have gone through. So up to the seventeenth century, before the seventeenth century, there was what you call the literal understanding of the Bible, okay? People were reading the Bible, there was no study, no critical, uh, 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 understanding of the Bible. There was just literal, what you see is what you get, what the Bible say, what the Bible, what I read here, what the Bible says is what I take with me. But from sixteen seventy-eight, work started and the historical critical method came to be. But as I said, it was not until nineteen forty-eight that the Catholics were allowed, the Catholics were allowed to engage in it, to have a Bible. Before that, Catholics could not, in, in fact, it went up to nineteen forty-eight, that Catholics, some Catholics can, can have Bible who can read Latin. Because the Bible was still in the vogue, uh, some Catholics could own the Bible. But today, now we can, there are laypeople who have entered, who laypeople who have studied the Bible, who have studied the, uh, original languages, Hebrew, Greek and Aramaic, who can look at the original and translate into, into English, uh, uh, for, for, for our, uh, reading. So historical critical method, what do we mean by historical critical method? It is that when you read the Bible, you should find out, uh, when was it written? You should find out what, what, what context, you should put context, a historical context. What was happening at that time? To whom was it written? When, like we said, the journalistic questions, you should ask ourselves the journalistic questions about the text. Who, what, when, how, with whom, to whom, okay? About the text. And that can tell, you can begin to unlock the meaning. And my favorite, my favorite one is, is, uh, uh, when Saint Paul says, women cover your hair. We can't, we can't go and tell women in the church today, I mean, I, I'll be run out of St. Charles if I say that. Okay. But women were asked to cover their hair at that time, so we have to ask, I say, what was happening? What was, to whom was it talking? It was a Corinthians, uh, it was in Corinth, that's totally different issue. And it was two thousand years ago. What were the women doing with their hair at that time to warrant that? It's because not everything is in, uh, not everything is in the Bible that they didn't, they don't tell us everything about the context. So that is why interpretation is needed. And the historical critical method says you should ask historical questions and you should ask questions about, about culture, about time, about space and things like that, okay? Same thing when it comes to, uh, uh, husbands, uh, love your wives, but wives submit to your husbands. It's not ready to be consumed like that, 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 you read that right now, that is not ready to be practiced like that. There must be an interpretation, there must be a reason why, and then we will be able to know if that is pulled from that time to our time, how will it read? If Saint Paul was standing here right now. what would he say? Would he say, husbands, love your wives and wives, submit to your husbands and mean it that way and leave it there like that? Oh no, we're gonna have a problem. So that's the historical critical method. And then we also have what you call psychological method. Now, when you read the Bible, you begin to think about behaviors. To be able to read, think about culture at that time. Culture and some of the psychological questions. There are now studies of psychology, human psychology that can help us. Studies of human psychology can now help us to be able to look at a particular behavior and interpret it in the Bible. The Bible was written with all that. The Bible was not just dropped from the sky. They were intentionally written to convey some message. So they actually put them together. Because some of the writings, later on we'll come to find out there were no commas or period and full stops. There wasn't nothing like that in the earlier writings. They were just continuous writing. Full stops, I mean periods and commas and semicolon and quotation and all that, all that came in the sixteen, seventeenth century. And the one who was putting the commas and all these things changed. I mean, things could change. They intentionally put those things to let the text mean what they believe that God is saying. So there is a psychological thing that came in. And then, so you can approach the Bible that way with your knowledge of psychology, there's a behavior, human behavior, human conscience and things like that. You can begin to factor some meaning, some understanding. Then there is a feminist method. Feminist method is what produced, what made us see that God cannot be just a father. God is not only a father. God is more than that. And if we can call God a father, we should be able to call God a mother too. Because God is beyond that, those categories. So the motherhood of God is something that is coming up now. Because there are a lot of texts in the Bible that talk about the feminine aspects of God. But we do not really translate it. We finally end up translating it as a male. The Holy Spirit at some point, you realize that in our church at some point, we have translated the Holy Spirit as he. And there's a question there that we have to ask. We have to really question that. That the Holy Spirit in more, in other places is called a she. In wisdom literature, for instance, we have read that several times here. When Moses, when Solomon asked God to give him wisdom, he says, the wisdom that is with you before the world was created. The wisdom, your wisdom, which was with you before the world was created. Send her to me, he says. Send her to me to be with me. She will guide me, she will teach me, she will do this, she will do that for me. Solomon called the wisdom of God, she. That is the Sophia, in the Greek word for wisdom is Sophia. That is what Sophia, women theologians have come up with through this method, have come up to the femininity of God. And then we begin to read, we went back to begin to read when it said, God created them, male and female, God created them. That's the second creation story. It says, God created human beings in the image, in God's image and likeness. Male and female, God created them. So what is that image again? Only father? No! There must be a reason why it has become father, 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 father. And some men have done a lot, a lot about it. Because they were the ones who had the right, who had the big pen. And so many of the masculine part of God was highlighted and the feminine part of God were. But today, things, I can tell you, this is what the church teaches. In biblical interpretation, there is a feminist method. And the mother, not the mother of God, but the mother God. Okay, that God is feminine too. And so when you pray, you should be able to say that. God, my mother. You should be able to be comfortable with that. So then I just want to say one more thing about the God, the mother. Because I am so convinced about this because, and not just because the church teaches, the biblical, Pontifical Biblical Commission says that. But what made me feel that is that there are texts in the Bible that show about God talking to Israel. It says, I am your mother, come suck the abundant breast that I can feed you, I can feed you, come, in Isaiah, you see that? Yeah, really? God is calling Israel to come have milk and drink to the... That image is lost on us. God said, I carried you in my womb. Oh, what? Again? Who is that again? Which God were we talking about? God, the father, carried us in their womb? What experience, which priest has that experience? So it's very important that these, again, history of salvation is evolving, it's dynamic, it's not static. Our understanding should not stay the same. We should continue to move our understanding forward. And the last one is a liberationist method. Remember, I'm not talking about liberal method. I say liberationist, okay? And I'm not championing a democratic. These are politics, these are partisan politics. I'm talking about liberationists. Liberationist is from the perspective of people who are oppressed. People who are oppressed. People who are oppressed or who live under some kind of oppression. We know that oppression, there's imperialism, there is colonialism. There is all kinds of things. There are people who are under the weight of human law. There are a lot of people who are disadvantaged by human law or society's law or institutional conventions. Institutions come up with a lot of laws, a lot of policies that ends up sometimes subjecting, setting populations into oppression. Those people, when they are reading the Bible, they look at God as someone who will liberate them, who free them from this. Let's say recently, what we have seen in our world is, recently we saw the Asian, attacks on Asians, for instance. If I read the Bible, I don't put aside my experience of life. You bring it to reading the Bible. And you are looking for God to intervene in your life, to do something about this, that your Christianity has something to do with this. If I have lost, if you have lost your wife, you have lost your husband to death. Your experience, when you take the Bible and you read it, you are looking for a God who is consoling, a God who can fill that gap for you, a God who can make life still possible for you. So you're coming with a perspective. Our experience, our human experiences don't stay behind from our faith. When we go to church, when we read the Bible, when we do things like that. We should not leave it behind. Because this is how God relates with us. So biblical interpretation is based on these things. Where you are will tell you what the scripture text is meaning today. If you take it again at another time when you have won a lottery, let's say, you've got a lot of money poured into your accounts. Yeah, when you read it, oh my God! You will get some message about, go build a school somewhere. Go do something like that. Go be nice to somebody, go give some dollars to people on the road. Cook some food and go share it with other people. Or toss some percentage to the church, ten percent. Don't forget that one. You know, so ideas come to you based on your experience. So never, never put it aside. Never, never practice your Christianity separate from the real life that is going on in your home, with your friends, with your family, with your fellow human beings, with your country. Whatever is happening out there, bring it into your reading, bring it into your church. And I want to say, finally, God does have answer for you. If you read and you meditate on it, you will find something to address some part of it. Somehow, sometimes, even if you cannot solve the problem, it will give you the strength to endure, to never fall apart. You will endure. So we will stop there and then we will continue. We are going to do, when we finish with the sermon on the mount, we are going to do some of Jesus's teaching in Judea and in Samaria. And then we will treat his last ministry in Jerusalem when he died and rose from the dead. And then we'll bring this to an end sometime at the beginning of June. We will be, we will stop and wait until the fall. So let me close out here and do we have any question or? Okay, so thank you all very much. God bless you and happy Easter. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. All right, thank you. Good night.